Great, all right, thank you, Rick. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us here this evening. This is a regular meeting of the Council of the Township of Montclair as being broadcast live on TV 34 and a streaming on TV 34 YouTube channel. It's available on demand and will again will be rebroadcast. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in the annual notice of the meeting schedule as set forth in Resolution R 20-187 adopted by the Council's regular meeting of December 1st, 2020, advertised in the official newspaper on December 31st, 2020, and January 7th, 2021, posted in the bulletin boards outside the municipal building and has remained continuously posted. In addition, a copy, the annual notice has been, has and is available to the public on file in the township of the Clerk, and this will be our conference meeting for June 1st. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Under God, individual liberty and justice.
All right, thank you all my colleagues and staff for being on. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Cummings?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Present.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Present.
Counselor Russo?
Present.
Counselor Schleger?
Here.
Counselor Yakavellis?
Present.
Mayor Spiller?
Present, thank you very much. Next, we've got a meeting and the agenda is Stop the Flexibility. I'll move forward to proclamations. First, we have our first proclamation recognizing the month of June as Pride Month, and Councilman Yakavellis, would you please do us the honors?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to just mark the moment for our community. It was 23 years ago that I was discharged from the Air Force under the Don't Ask, Don't Tell policy and told at the time by military leaders that I would never amount to anything. So here I sit tonight as an elected official about to read this proclamation and later to move to introduce a couple pieces of legislation as well. So I'm really delighted and wanted to just mark that moment for for me and for the community. So thank you. Whereas Montclair is a diverse and inclusive community whose residents believe in safety, prosperity, equality, and hope for all, and whereas Montclair recognizes the human rights of all citizens and actively supports an end to all forms of prejudice and discrimination, and whereas our LGBTQ residents have made significant and important contributions to the history and quality of life in Montclair and throughout Essex County, and whereas the Council of the Township of Montclair is committed to promoting LGBTQ equality and fostering welcoming and affirming LGBTQ spaces, and whereas more recent advances in LGBTQ equality, including marriage, bans against LGBTQ conversion, the advance of some federal protections with respect to access to federal services and open military service, LGBTQ inclusive and protective anti-discrimination public access state laws, positive LGBTQ public opinion, widespread LGBTQ visibility and representation in media, education, public office, anti-bullying laws, and welcoming and affirming school climate policies, including actions to create LGBTQ inclusive curriculum and corporate America's inclusion and promotion, are all directly linked back to the victories of early LGBTQ rights and advocates that I would add were made up and comprised of women of color who often don't get credit for this work. And whereas a community recognizes the efforts of many advocates and allies who enabled this progress and opened society's eyes to the idea that love is love and no one should be forced to hide part of their identity, and whereas in response to previous legislative and executive attempts to roll back advances, President Biden has issued a series of executive orders to prevent and combat LGBTQ discrimination. Despite these efforts, a lack of comprehensive federal civil rights protections and cultural and political climate shifts that empower this community's hate crimes continue to impact this community's individuals and families who face significant uncertainty, oppression, and discrimination to this day. Now therefore, the mayor and the council of the Township of Montclair do hereby proclaim June as LGBTQ Pride Month in the Township of Montclair. We urge all people in Montclair to join LGBTQ advocacy and actions, promote diversity and inclusion, create welcoming and affirming spaces for LGBTQ youth, trans, and non-binary folks, persons of color, and be visible, outspoken allies, and upstanders as any injustice against any of us is an injustice against all of us, and I so move.
It's been moved. Is there any objection? Seeing none, so adopted. Thank you so much, Councilman. Thank you also for sharing your story and important part of the journey that we've all seen and continue to work through. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we've got a proclamation honoring a gentleman by the name of Graham Russell, I believe. Gray, I see you on here, my friend. So I'm going to go ahead and and read this one. Whereas the mayor and council of the Township of Montclair, on behalf of the municipal staff and all Montclair residents, congratulate Graham "Gray" Russell, who is retiring July 1st, 2023 after serving the town. Not sure if you caught that, Gray, 2023, just figured I'd add a few more years on there for you. Make sure he's stuck around. I see, you know, I don't know. I think I could have gotten away with it, but. Retiring July 1st, 2021 after serving the township for over 20 years. And whereas Mr. Russell, who began work with the township in 2000, has served Montclair in several capacities, initially as the recycling coordinator, then as environmental and code coordinator, and finally settling in as the sustainability officer working under the Department of Health and Human Services. During his tenure, Mr. Russell has made a name for himself and the Township of Montclair as a leader in sustainable practices and recycling in New Jersey. Whereas Mr. Russell has been instrumental in earning the Township of Montclair an inaugural certification as a sustainable Jersey community with recertifications in subsequent years. He has earned Montclair a Climate Showcase Community Designation, organized the installation in Montclair after the first in New Jersey electric vehicle charging stations, garnered grants funding to allow the installation of first-in-state Bike Depot in collaboration with New Jersey Bike-Walk Coalition, served as a founding member of the extremely successful Montclair Farmers Market, organized the Township's Green Film Series, and has been instrumental in organizing the Energy Aggregation Program to support renewable energy for Montclair and surrounding communities. And he has been behind the research and planning for the proposed microgrid project to protect a crucial portion of the town in the event of an emergency loss of power. And whereas Gray began a township initiative to provide rain barrels and compost bins to Montclair residents at a reduced cost and happily agrees to teach both young people and adults about collecting rainwater and the benefits of composting organic food waste, earning him the nickname "The Compost King", and has taught sustainability practices in elementary schools and colleges. And whereas Gray serves on the boards of many environmental and sustainability organizations, including the Montclair and Essex County Environmental Commissions, Association of New Jersey Recyclers Bike and Walk Montclair amongst others, and whereas Mr. Russell spent earlier years working in a career as an audio recording engineer and music producer, working on almost 100 major label recordings with well-known artists such as Joan Jett, Blondie, Tom Petty, Bruce Springsteen, and others, before changing course to follow his passion for environmental work. He was employed by the New Jersey Environmental Federation Clean Water Action, New York Botanical Garden, New York City Recycling Advisory Board, and served as the Director of the Bronx Solid Waste Prevention Program before finding work within the Township of Montclair. Whereas Gray, a lifelong Montclair resident, is a devoted husband to his wife Linda and speaks proudly of his two grandsons. His love of nature and the environment keep him busy traveling, hiking, and being outdoors. With his newfound free time, Gray plans to spend more time pursuing outdoor adventures with family and friends. His easygoing ways, friendly smile, and ever-present desire to share his knowledge with coworkers and residents alike will be missed. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the Township of Montclair and the County of Essex hereby recognize the many contributions Graham Russell has made to our community and join with his family, friends, and coworkers in recognizing and thanking him for his service to Montclair and wish him a happy retirement in which he can spend more time with family and friends and pursue his many interests. And Gray, we're hoping some of those interests include continuing to serve here in the township in some way on some of our committees. You've got just such wonderful expertise, but on behalf of the full council, I want to say thank you. I know that, you know, this is a testament to you. Every single one of my council colleagues jumped at it to say, hey, let's do a proclamation for Gray and really excited about it. And, you know, without objection, I so move it. So it's moved and accepted, but Gray, on behalf of all of us, you know, really thank you for your years of service. It is it is so appreciated and certainly give you a moment to say any few words if you'd like to add something.
I just want to thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. That's really, really, I'm honored. I really am, and that was really very, very lovely remarks that you've made. I'm a little embarrassed about it, but it's been really a treat for me to be able to work for the town where I'm born and raised and lived my entire life. And so this has been a great opportunity and working with Sue in the Department of Health and Human Services, really a great, great treat, and I really appreciate this proclamation that you've made for me. I'm really humbled by it. Thank you so much.
Mayor, if I may, Gray, I just want to, I sent the video, Gray, I sent the video to Governor Brown, of course retired now, but I got the video when I put up his book and said, Gray sent me out to the Solar Cities Conference in 2003, and I met Jerry again and sat with him because you let me go and you said I should go. Thank you.
Absolutely, very good, very good, Council.
Councilwoman Price Abrams?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. Gray, I just wanted to add my own great appreciation and our working collaboratively here and there over the years as well, before I was serving in any kind of elected office and you were, you know, that resource person to be in my my own initiatives around composting early on, but I would also see you in in Trenton and in major conferences and wherever the vanguard of conversation is around sustainability and environmentalism. And so I I know that's just who you are, and you'll continue to do those kinds of things, and I look forward to still, of course, picking your brain when we can, but thank you very much and wish you happiness as you embark on new chapters.
Thank you, Councilwoman, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you so much. On behalf of, again, of the full council, thank you for your years of dedicated service to this community, Gray. Really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gray.
Thank you. Good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Sue.
Next, we have an Eagle Scout proclamation. Can I ask Deputy Mayor Herlock, would you please do the honors?
I would be honored. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a proclamation congratulating Eagle Scout Samuel Legasi. Whereas Boy Scouts of America is an organization that builds skills which young people need to deal with the eventual realities of life, not only developing in them an appreciation for nature, but also helping them to develop self-esteem and confidence that will lead to a sense of independence. Scouting offers young people reasonable fun and an adventure, I'm sorry, responsible fun and adventure while training them in citizenship, service, and leadership. And whereas Boy Scouts Troop 12 of Montclair, New Jersey, was established in 1924 and is one of the oldest active troops in the country. For over 90 years, Troop 12 has been helping young people achieve their potential as leaders. As scouts achieve various scouting and leadership skills, they earn merit badges and advance through the ranks of Scout, Tenderfoot, Second Class, First Class, Star, Life, and Eagle. Troop 12 has proudly endorsed over 350 Eagle Scouts. And whereas Eagle Scouts can earn a total of 21 merit badges in fields such as first aid, citizenship in the community, citizenship in the nation, citizenship in the world, communication, cooking, personal fitness, emergency preparedness or lifesaving, environmental science or sustainability, personnel management, swimming, hiking, or cycling, camping, and family life. In addition, Eagle Scout candidates are required to complete a project that benefits their school, church, or community and entails planning and supervising volunteers. And whereas Samuel, a member of Troop 12, has attained the rank of Eagle Scout, he is a senior at Montclair High School and has been a member of the school's tennis team, chess club, and winning mock trial team, man after my own heart. He has also utilized his chess skills to tutor elementary school students in the game. Throughout high school, Samuel has upheld a stellar academic record, being nominated to the National Honor Society and taking advanced placement classes in five major subjects. He has also been recognized for his citizenship and community service. Samuel considers his scouting experience to be the most formative activity of his youth. Attaining the rank of Eagle Scout represents a promise he made to his family, community, and country to maintain a drive for service to others and to be an example of good character. Upon graduation, Samuel will be attending the United States Military Academy at West Point. And whereas for his Eagle Scout project, Samuel and his volunteers designed and built a sensory room at the Montclair YMCA for children with sensory and social challenges, including children on the autism spectrum. Samuel and his team of 22 volunteers worked 170 hours to make the sensory room a success. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the Township of Montclair hereby recognize and salute the outstanding accomplishments of Samuel Legasi and join Boy Scouts Troop 12 of Montclair in congratulating him on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Well done, Samuel, and I so move, Mr. Mayor.
It's closed in without objection. Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor. Appreciate that. We do also have another proclamation, obviously with some of the beginnings being similar, but Councilwoman Price Abrams, if you don't mind doing the honors?
My pleasure, my privilege. Thank you, Mayor. So this is a proclamation congratulating Eagle Scout Curtis DeSmith. And whereas we heard a lot about the troop itself and the history of it, I'm going to skip to, whereas Curtis DeSmith, a member of Troop 12, has attained the rank of Eagle Scout, he is a senior at Montclair High School and a member of the school's winning crew team. Curtis helps ensure the team's future success by volunteering at Learn to Row programs that teach younger aspiring rowers how to practice the sport. He credits his scouting experience with teaching him the importance of team work, which has helped lead to his successes throughout his scouting career as well as his extracurricular activities. Curtis will attend Northeastern University upon graduation. And whereas for his Eagle project, Curtis built new garden beds for Montclair Community Farms, an organization that guides residents on how to live a healthy lifestyle and be better connected to their environment. The garden beds are utilized to support the organization's mission of growing fresh produce to sell at farmers markets, teaching children about agriculture and nutrition, and supporting other organizations in the northern New Jersey area. Curtis and his team of 15 volunteers worked 98 hours to make the garden project a success, and I hope Gray Russell knows about it because it's right up thematically what he does and has done for us. So now therefore, the mayor and council of the Township of Montclair hereby recognize and salute the outstanding accomplishments of Curtis DeSmith and join Boy Scouts Troop Boy Scouts Troop 12 of Montclair in congratulating him on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Congratulations.
Excellent, and without objection, it's moved. So thank you, Councilwoman, and we congratulate both. Thank you so much. All right, next, I'm going to open us up for public comment. In an effort to minimize exposure to COVID-19 and maintain social distancing practices, this June 1, 2021 Township Council meeting and further meetings until the pandemic's over will only be available to the public remotely. Those who wish to participate now during public comment should dial in to 408-418-9388. When asked to enter an access code, please enter 173-253-3933, then press pound. When asked to enter an attendee number, please simply press pound. When asked, please state your name and then press pound. The administrator will say when is the caller's turn to speak, and the caller will then hear two beeps. At that time, the caller will have an opportunity to make his or her comments. Mr. Stafford, I turn it over to you and Mr. Finn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Caller with the number starting 973-900, it is your turn to speak, 973-900. Please, for the record, state your name and do your best to keep your comments under three minutes. Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Hi, my name is Maria Evadorivo. I'm a member of Montclair Beyond Policing. I am living in Montclair since 2015. I've been involved in criminal justice system research on women's prisons in Latin America for many years, and I've been an advocate for non-punitive responses to social problems. So for me, taking part of a group that believes in treating people with humanity and not apply punitive responses was natural. We are having a town hall meeting with other organizations from our township to discuss on topics of non-punitive approaches to reduce police violence interaction with our communities. Please join us on Sunday, June 6th at 4:00 PM on our Facebook page for this live event. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Caller with the number starting 973-619, it is your turn to comment, 973-619. Please keep your comments under three minutes, and for the record, state your name.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Excellent. This is Ahava, president of the tenants' organization of Montclair. We are a group created to get rent control established and implemented in Montclair. It's been two years. First, I would like to thank you, Mayor and Council, for the rent freeze ordinance extension that we're expecting, number nine on tonight's meeting agenda. I would like to address the public as well with, you know, it is unfortunate we're keeping our positivity and everything high, but we do have to address the reality that there are many landlords and owners who have ignored the ordinance. And if you as a tenant did not know about the freeze, we hope that now you will share to your family and friends and also watch out for this extension, which is expected for extending out the rent freeze ordinance through September of 2021. Currently, it goes through June 30 of 2021, which means your rent cannot be raised. You just want to make sure that you check the exemptions, which you can find in the first version of the ordinance. We can share that to you when you email us as well. The rent freeze ordinance is different from the rent control ordinance. They are two separate entities. The rent control ordinance is still held up in court at this time. That's how we're describing it. What we want is implementation of our approved ordinance from April 7 of 2020. We have to give the if, this, then. So if this goes to referendum, the rent control ordinance, a ballot vote in the fall is possible, and then we need you all to vote in support of the rent control ordinance, but what we still want and expect will be implementation of the approved ordinance. Not that it's a good thing that many renters are still reaching out to us. It's good that you're reaching out, but we are sorry for the inconveniences, frustrations you've been experiencing due to issues with your landlord, landlords, and/or property owners. The situations vary and extreme, and we aim to make sure you have your rights and that we are ensuring that we're going to do everything possible to work towards the completion of rent control for it being implemented. It doesn't end, but the establishment of and the implementation of and it continuing. I'd like to remind the public to look out for us, the Tenants' Organization of Montclair Advocacy Group, out and about in town this month, the month of June, with info and updates and opportunities to do intake with us. Tomb Advocacy on Facebook for our meeting flyers, links to council meetings such as this one, and our blog. If you would like to write for the blog, send us an email request. We would love to see you stay. We want more of our citizens, the residents, renters, to be able to stay in town. Have a good night.
Thank you. Caller with the number starting 973-330, it is your turn to comment, 973-330. Please, for the record, state your name and do your best to keep your comments under three minutes.
Good evening, Council. This is Frank Ribacki. I would like to talk to you about three items tonight very quickly. First, I would like to extend my appreciation and thanks to Gray Russell for his 21 years of service. Maybe probably packed in 30 years in that 21 years, but I appreciate all that he's done, and I thank you for doing the proclamation tonight. The second item is the fire contract, which you will be initiating negotiations with. I really wanted to get back to Counselor Russo in that I think his characterization was a little imbalanced. Yes, the shared, the interagency agreement is a good thing. It's a model. People are not modeling after us because, I think in part because of the last contract. The last contract, the last 10-year contract was a pretty atrocious contract, and I think that that one of the callers, I think it was Miss Birmingham, and I, following up on that, really just want to point out that what is done is done, but let's not do another contract like the one we just did. That contract essentially gave Glen Ridge three free, two free years of fire service, protection service from us, and on top of that, we gave them a $200,000 cash signing bonus, which was really bad considering all, you know, we built the station down there for them. Anyway, the other thing is I really want you guys to look at the alarm registration program. I think it's seen its day. It's time to call it a day with it. It started out at a high point back in 2007. It's dwindling now down to $100,000 in revenue and the cost of $55,000. Anybody who knows outsourcing would say that something's wrong there. You don't pay 55% of your cost in outsourcing for a program. It can't possibly cover false alarms, and I think you guys really have to look at it. It's a good objective. I understand the objective. It's just the way you're going about it is seeing its day. 2007, a lot of things are different since then. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Mayor, manager, may I just ask a question? Well, I don't want to ask the question, I guess. I just want to say again, when people bring up about the contract, the overall concept of shared services and regionalization, we are a model with Glen Ridge. Now whether the individual contract from 10 years ago was good or bad or something else, and I've researched it myself, I was not on the council at the time, I was not part of that contract, the previous two I was, and I helped settle one in 2003. So we had a good one then. I guess maybe we had the problem of competition with Bloomfield, which made the management and legal people at the time negotiate because they had to survive a competition. We can't get into any of that tonight, except I want to say again, I've said this to the manager, Public Safety Committee, and the attorney, please do not let what happened in 2002 or '03 when I was mayor happen. What happened was we were not getting it done, and the mayor of Glen Ridge called me and said, as mayor to mayor, get it done. And I had to push and get it done with the manager and the transition to a new, there was a temporary manager. So I know, I know Tim Stafford is a very professional manager, our town attorney, and all the staff people and the fire chief will work on this because it's coming up another year. Mr. Ribacki and Ms. Birmingham, I've communicated with you, you know, I was not there, not saying, don't blame me, I'm saying I trumpet this as a great accomplishment from 25 years ago, which I hope will maybe be able to renew at a good, you know, settlement, but we also have to be, we be realistic that there are, there are others that could provide the service, so we can't just do what we want. We're not doing this in a vacuum. That's what I'm saying. And I want to say again that Montclair-Glen Ridge Fire Service Contract is the model for the state. If only other towns would do this and do other shared services as we do, they could save money and regionalize and do things more efficiently, and I still think it's a great model, Frank, Frank Ribacki, even though you don't like the last contract. Thank you, Mayor and Manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Caller with the number starting 862-250, it's your turn to comment, 862-250. Please. I put you on mute so I could ask you to turn off your radio or your listening device because the feedback was incredible. So I'll give you 30 seconds for you to hear that, and then I will ask you to do that so that we can appropriately hear you. Okay, sir. Please, for the record, state your name and keep your comments under three minutes, please.
Sure. Hi, this is Abraham Dickerson in Montclair. I'm just calling to reiterate what I've been talking about the last several phone calls. As you well know, this is the anniversary week, past week of George Floyd, and this is the anniversary week that's coming up this weekend for two days in Montclair. Thousands of people came. We put out nine points that we thought that was low-hanging fruit that the local police department can do themselves. As of this point, nothing has changed in a reform matter. Mayor Spiller actually signed off on three of those points with the NAACP that my group put together last year. I just want to be clear, because I made constant talk with Montclair Police Department, and the common response is, you know, what's happening nationally isn't happening in Montclair. The problem is that there is no national uniform standard. And the other problem is we're afraid if something happens, Montclair will do whatever they feel need, that the Montclair Police Department will do whatever it feels it needs to do to possibly maybe not cooperate. I'm not saying that is, that is the case. But the only way to assure that is to have some standards, to have some transparency. We're living in a, in a country right now that is extremely divided with the most cuckoo things being said. We need to know that our police department in Montclair will stand with the people. And that needs to be done through policy. I think it's important that we talk about a civilian review board seriously here in this township. I think it's important that the body cameras mandate took place today, but we're not clear in Montclair on how they operate. What are their exact protocols for them? I approached the police department and asked them, will they come out and explain to the public so we don't find ourselves in a situation like South Carolina, or Arizona, or Louisiana, where things come out six months, seven months, even two years, even two years, even two years later? I don't think that's asking so much when we talk about police reform here. Not only is it important to move forward on this rapidly, but I just want you to have some nostalgia last year when all those people came out. Those people did not have to come out during a pandemic. People came out because they were.
Mr. Dickerson, that noise was the three-minute time limit. Would you do us, do us the service of summarizing your comments, please?
Yes, sure. I would like to see this town council be more proactive and without disclosing names, there have been several members that I am in contact with, but we need the entire body to take place in these meetings, especially the town manager. And I'm going to respect the three-minute time limit, and I'm going to cut myself short. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Caller with the number starting 718-791. It is your turn to comment. 718-791. Please, for the record, state your name and keep your comments under three minutes.
Hi, my name is John Sherman. I've called in before. I'm also a member of Montclair Beyond Policing. Really appreciate those comments from Abe. And I really appreciated your proclamations tonight, too. I mean, go pride and also Gray Russell, what a great, great addition to this town. And it's, you know, so many great things about Montclair, why I live here. I've been here since 2000. I just wanted to take a minute to sort of explain my position with policing and what I've learned really in the last year since protests and the huge showing of support for making some changes in how we go about things. I'm not coming at this from any sort of radical political standpoint, although I'm becoming increasingly radical in my thoughts about it. I think the point that everyone needs to think about, including people on the council, is what do we really want of our society on a very basic level moving forward in, in the future? And there's a lot of literature out there that shows some alternative methods of taking care of ourselves, basically. And I just want you all to be part of the conversation and be open-minded about it. It truly is the way of the future. And if, you know, you can, you can wait for there to be a problem or you can get proactive about it, but one way to start the conversation is to join us on Sunday at this town hall we're hosting with, you know, some other great, great people in town. I mean, Restorative Justice Montclair, Bellevue Avenue Library folks, climate activist David Porfodg, Montclair Mutual Aid. There's a lot of people in town who are, you know, concerned about this. And so please join us in the conversation, Sunday, June 6th, 4:00 to 5:30 PM. You can go to the Montclair Beyond Policing Facebook page. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Caller with the number starting 973-747. It is your turn to comment. 973-747. Please, for the record, state your name and keep your comments under three minutes.
Good evening. This is William Scott, co-chair of the Montclair Housing Commission and also Chair of the Montclair NAACP Housing Committee. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay. I just want to thank the council from a housing commission standpoint, because I gotta, I wear a couple of hats, so I'm going to jump back and forth here a little bit there. But for the ordinance, oh 2109, which is going to clarify the wording and the inclusionary zoning ordinance to update the design specs for the affordable housing units, to bring them up to par to the market rate units and any new developments moving forward. And also the payment in cash in lieu, which will support affordable housing being built. The amount has been increased to, I think, up to $190,000, almost $50,000 above what it used to be for 10 years. I think that this is a very proactive change in the inclusionary zoning ordinance, and I appreciate the council and the Economic Development Committee for moving this forward. Also, not to repeat what the Tenants Organization of Montclair stated in regards to the freeze on rent increases through September 30th. I think that this is something that this council has been on top of from the very beginning throughout the year, and extending that freeze is going to be very supportive for the renters in the township of Montclair, at least up until September. We know that the state of emergency is still in effect, but could be lifted any minute by Governor Murphy. And I think that you want to be prepared for some other unforeseen issues that may be coming down the line. I do have one concern from an NAACP housing standpoint. It's been brought to my attention that the Montclair Landlord-Tennant Committee has been informed not to conduct any more mediation hearings or interviews dealing with landlord- tenant disputes. And I really like to understand how this came about without the public being informed, especially the NAACP, that this is something that's being put in place in the midst of a pandemic, which I just mentioned, the probability that the governor's going to be lifting the state of emergency within the next 30 or 60 days. There's, there's at least a hun, excuse me, at least 60,000 Essex County tenants that could be facing eviction, and to not provide mediation at the local township level, I'm concerned how this came about. So could someone please explain where this, how this came about and why?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Scott, I will say this, I think, but you're certainly free to reach out to our township attorney for any additional information on that. I know that he has spoken to this issue a number of times, but he can provide greater information on the matter from a legal perspective. Thank you.
And I will do so if I've reached out to.
Caller with the number starting 973-803. It is your turn to comment. 973-803. Please, for the record, state your name and keep your comments under three minutes.
Hi, my name is Michael Murnan. I'm a member of the Unitarian Universalist Congregation here in Montclair and also in the Social Justice Coalition there. I'm calling in support of the LGBTQ equality agenda that's being rolled out a little later this evening that Peter Yakabelis made reference to. The whole agenda is really important to me. It's important because I live in a town that I want to see remain, and I like the word, I think Ms. Price Abrams used it earlier, in the vanguard of progressive values for all people. And in particular, I also support it because I've known a lot of people, LGBTQ people in my life, at various stages of their lives, who have had to suffer under oppression, having to live clandestine lives, and, you know, are living in an era now where rights are finally being recognized, and we have to keep advancing the ball. Not to go through everything that's being discussed later, but in particular, I wanted to emphasize support for the town statutes proposed, and in particular, the city's non, the contract of nondiscrimination ordinance, which to broaden it to include sexual orientation and gender identity. The reason it's so important is because it puts an outward face to the larger community, the state, and anyone who wants to do business with us, that this is the right way, do it this way. And so we're not just talking amongst ourselves, because, you know, it's, it's easy to talk amongst ourselves and celebrate how enlightened we are. But when you attach dollars to it and everyone understands, you know what? We have to get in line. We have to, we have to consider how we're going to do business in the modern world, how we're going to be part of the advancement of human rights and civil rights, then by doing that, the town becomes part of a movement and stays part of a movement and stays in the vanguard of the movement. So that's all I wanted to say. I know others, I hope, will be speaking to these issues tonight.
Caller with the number starting 973-819. It is your turn to comment. 973-819. Please, for the record, state your name and do your best to keep your comments under three minutes.
Hello, my name is Peggy Hayden. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I am a 30-year resident of Montclair and 30-year member of the Universal Unitarian Congregation at Montclair. And I'm also speaking in favor of the, of the equity agenda that's going to be rolled out this weekend and the coming weeks. There are two ordinances that I saw already out. The, I want to speak to the issue of single occupancy bathrooms. I think that that is an elegant solution to a problem that is raised by people's inability to deal with trans people. But it seems a good way to deal with it because it prevents them from being embarrassed, and it also is, is a plus to many stores who have no problem with single occupancy bathrooms. I'd also like to speak in favor of the, of the ordinances that require nondiscrimination against both sexual discrimination and gender identity, because that is sometimes not included. And for us to be able to be strong and be able to say, Montclair includes that and is going to enforce it both internally and externally, would, would indeed, as Mike said, put us in the vanguard. So there are going to be more, more things coming, I'm sure, because now is the time for us to, to, to make sure that as a community, we ensure that everybody has the rights necessary to live peacefully in this society. And the equity bill, bills, I believe, will be very helpful doing that in Montclair. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the number starting 973-902. It is your turn to comment. 973-902. Please, for the record, state your name and keep your comments under three minutes.
My name is Kate Simmons. And I'm a member of the Unitarian Universalist Congregation at Montclair, and I'm calling in support of the LGBTQ equality agenda that's being considered tonight. And also, I heard the other caller, I would like also to support the civilian review board for the police. So with the LGBTQ equality agenda, I think it's really important that this town updates its employment nondiscrimination, nondiscrimination policy. It should include sexual orientation and gender identity. After all, we think Montclair is such a leader in the field. We need to show it. And if that's a set nondiscrimination ordinance, should also include contractors to the township. And what's wrong with having a gender-neutral restroom facility for people that are transgendered? It's the least we can do to be welcoming to all residents, visitors. And I guess lastly, I think the youth mental health protection ordinance is crucial. As you know, conversion therapy has been discarded, discredited. You can't really change a person's sexual orientation or gender identity or expression. And I think it's important for this township to provide and protect our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgendered, queer, questioning youth from these harmful practices. So to wrap it up, I speak tonight to create awareness, and I implore you, members of town council, to be leaders by enacting this LGBTQ equality agenda.
Thank you. Before I call on the next caller, I urge folks who call in to turn off the sound on their listening devices. The feedback is incredible, and it serves, it serves as a disservice to not only folks trying to hear you, but frankly, to the points, the substantive points that you're trying to make. We really have a hard time hearing them. So please, do us the service of turning off your listening devices from a sound standpoint so that we can appropriately hear you, and we certainly appreciate that. Caller with the number starting 862-438. It is your turn to comment. 862-438. Please, for the record, state your name and keep your comments under three minutes.
Hi, yes, my name is Alexis Dickerson, and I'm just calling in tonight to thank Councilman Yakabelis for his commitment to making Montclair a more LGBTQ inclusionary space and in support of his new Equality Act. This legislation truly represents the values and the people that live in Montclair, and I just really wanted to emphasize the entire town's support for this much-needed legislation. It's extremely nice to be in town while policy representative of all residents is coming into place. Thank you.
Mr. Stafford, can I just comment real quick?
By all means.
Thank you. I know there's, I appreciate those direct comments. Thank you. I know those, I appreciate those direct comments, but I just want to iterate that this is a group effort to develop these ordinances and proposals. So I appreciate the direct call-outs and shout-outs, but this couldn't have been done without the work of my colleagues here. So thank you.
Caller with the number starting 917-392, it is your turn to comment. 917-392, please, for the record, state your name and keep your comments under three minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Eileen Groomingham. Thank you for taking my call and thank you for your time. I also wanted to just thank Mr. Gray Russell for his dedicated work to our community. I think Montclair is really going to miss him. And I just thank you for thanking him because I do think his work has been really important. I heard my name earlier in regards to the fire department, and I'm actually not going to talk about that today, although I do think it's a discussion worth continuing. And I thank Mr. Russo for his comments on that and Mr. Avaki as well. Today, I wanted to just call, as others, as a member of, I'm a member of UCU Montclair as well, and just to say thank you to all of you for your support of the equality agenda that's being introduced tonight. I think it is very important for the town of Montclair to have clear statements of nondiscrimination. So that would be through the ordinances that are proposed today, the nondiscrimination employment and contractor ordinances, as well as the gender-neutral restroom ordinance. I think it's really important and wonderful to promote diversity and inclusion when we can and create a welcoming community. So thank you all for your work on this, and we look forward to it being passed. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Caller with the number starting 973-820, it is your turn to comment. 973-820, please, for the record, state your name and keep your comments under three minutes.
Good evening, this is Toni Martin. I am just coming to the meeting. I am coming out of another meeting, so I don't know if this has been discussed yet. But I did want to ask for some clarity on the role of the landlord-tenant housing committee, which I think we continue to need at least some sorts of protections for tenants during this very tenuous time for tenants and landlords and working out the problems of housing people and affordable housing through the pandemic. Please, please let me know what the status is. And as we all await for the ordinance that was legally adopted by you, the council, to be implemented after another court ruling, we would like to know what protections are in place now. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the number starting 973-744, it is your turn to comment. 973-744, please, state your name for the record and keep your comments under three minutes.
Hello, my name is Felice Chelikol. I'm a member of the Unitarian Universalist Congregation here at Montclair and a longtime resident of Montclair. And I'm calling to support the LGBTQ equality agenda being considered tonight. And actually, I support all the issues to be, that are addressed regarding this issue. In particular, I want to support the Township Employment Nondiscrimination Ordinance. The town needs to update its employment nondiscrimination policies so that it's enforceable and specifically includes sexual orientation and especially gender identity. This will help create an inclusive and safe work environment for LGBTQ township employees, as well as a more diverse workforce. And to put it simply, as most of us believe, that all persons are worthy and should be shown respect, and we should support all those to maintain their dignity throughout their daily lives and interactions. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the number starting 703-731, it is your turn to comment. 703-731, please, for the record, state your name and keep your comments under three minutes.
Hello, councilors. Thank you for your service and thank you for your affirmation of the Pride Month proclamation shared earlier. I'm Reverend Anya Sandler Michael, Senior Co-Minister of the Unitarian Universalist Congregation at Montclair and a resident of the Fourth Ward. I'm calling in ardent and impassioned support of the LGBTQ equality agenda. The most prominent and repeated themes throughout Jewish and Christian scripture are welcome and protection, that we are called to welcome and then that we are called to protect the stranger, the orphan, the widow, that we welcome and protect those most at risk to discrimination, harm, and abuse. And our town is known for its welcoming, but we struggle to back up our welcome with the appropriate protections. We cannot depend on always having a friendly administration. We cannot depend on the people who hire and who employ to get nondiscrimination right. We cannot depend on private locations to establish single occupancy restrooms that are safe for transgender and gender nonconforming citizens. We need to have these protections written into our guiding documents, into our policies. We need to establish them as what we do. Because these protections, they're not additions, they're not excess, they are the proof of our accountability. So please move the equality agenda forward, not just in your hearts or in our proclamations, but in our legislation and thus in our town. Let's follow welcome with protection. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the number starting 862-262, it is your turn to comment. 862-262, please, for the record, state your name and keep your comments under three minutes.
Hello, happy pride, everyone. My name is Annalise Sherfin. I am a resident of Montclair. I am also a member of the Unitarian Universalist Congregation at Montclair. And first of all, I want to offer my support for tonight's proposed ordinances related to the LGBTQ equality agenda. I am also a member of Montclair Beyond Policing, and as others have mentioned, we are holding a town hall this Sunday, June 6th, at 4:00 PM. And please visit the Montclair Beyond Policing Facebook page for details. I wanted to speak briefly about why we are holding this town hall. At Montclair Beyond Policing, we envision a world where policing is unnecessary because people's needs are met. And although we know there will always be harm in our society, we can also build up responses that provide instead of punish, one that holds people accountable in a way that repairs harm as opposed to recreating it. We can create a better world through what Miriam Kaba describes as "one million experiments." The groups presenting on Sunday are Restorative Justice Montclair, Montclair Mutual Aid, New Jersey Harm Reduction Coalition, Friends of the Bellevue Avenue Library, Brick City Mutual Aid, and climate activist David Corfitch. Montclair Beyond Policing will also be presenting on our petition for a non-police-based crisis response program in our town or region. These are our neighbors, and they are working to build a better world for everyone, not just those who are deemed worthy of protection. I encourage everyone to join us on Sunday, to join the conversation about these programs and about building a vision for a better world. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Caller with the number starting 646-713, it is your turn to comment. 646-713, please, for the record, state your name and keep your comments under three minutes.
Yes, thank you. My name is Mark Joseph, and I'm a resident of the South Ward in Montclair. And I want to start with a little quote. I know Council Yakabelis mentioned the unheralded willmen of color of the LGBTQ movement. And there's a quote by Audre Lorde, "There's no such thing as single-issue struggles because we do not live single-issue lives." And I'm going to call tonight just to connect kind of Pride Month a little bit to defunding the police. You know, police violence used to be a central issue within the LGBTQ community, and I think it still is within the activists there. In fact, the Stonewall riots of 1969 started because of police oppression. You know, in 2013, there was a survey, I forgot exactly where it's from, but 48% of LGBTQ victims of violence reported police misconduct. 58% of transgender people reported the same. From a different place, prison policy blogs, one in six trans people have been incarcerated. One in two black trans people have been incarcerated. And there, these people are subjected to systemic violence, denied essential health care, high rates of solitary confinement and sexual assault, and routinely are misgendered. And I just want to say, there's so many people calling that about the equality agenda, as they should, we support that at Montclair Beyond Policing too, but also to connect, you know, Pride Month to prison abolition. You know, those two things have been inextricably linked since the 1960s, even though they've kind of lost some of that since then. So like everybody who's been talking, I want to invite everybody on June 6th from 4:30 to 5:30, we're having a town hall, Transforming Harm Through Care. Everyone is welcome to talk more about these issues because they are connected. You cannot separate one without the other. You cannot solve for one without the other. We cannot make this world whole without both, without all. You know, and I hear people talking about Montclair being the vanguard, and I'm going to keep saying this every time I call, but we cannot spend $16 million on the police and consider ourselves the vanguard of anything. So hopefully more people, some people, show up on Sunday to have some of these conversations. I thank you for your time and have a great evening. Bye.
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Manager, I want to just make sure that the caller was talking about the Fourth Ward, because I've never heard of the South Ward. I just want to make that clear as the Fourth Ward representative.
Thank you, sir. Caller with the number starting 914-552, it is your turn to comment. 914-552, please, for the record, state your name and keep your comments under three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Johanna Foster, and I'm here with my daughter, Sophie Foster-Palmer, and we are both members of Unitarian Universalist Congregation at Montclair, residents of Montclair. And we are calling in to support the work of Montclair Beyond Policing and also to support the work of the tenants' organization of Montclair, and also to thank the council members who are working on the LGBTQ equality agenda that's being considered later this evening. It's important to both of us as an LGBTQ family here in Montclair. We've been here for 18 years. We moved to this town to raise our children in a safe environment where they are protected, where they can thrive, where they are afforded dignity. And we are particularly looking forward to the council passing the Employment Nondiscrimination Ordinance, the City Contractor Nondiscrimination Ordinance, and the All Gender Ordinance for single occupancy restrooms that we've been hearing about this evening. We are looking forward to the council entertaining additional ordinances, the anti-bullying ordinances, the ordinances against conversion therapy and the like. You know, as a mother of a queer young daughter who graduated from Montclair High School in 2017, and would have liked to have an experience in our Montclair public schools that was much more welcoming and affirming and protecting, our family does not want to see another family in our township experience what we have experienced. And we look forward to the council making that possible. My daughter is a young adult now. It would be great if she could work in the Township of Montclair. She is a public health worker in New York City. It would be great if we felt that she could be protected as a municipal worker here in her hometown. So I appreciate all the work that the council's doing, and we look forward to Montclair moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, there are no further callers in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. With that, I will close debate. Ms. Martin, I just want to answer, I know that you asked what actions, what pieces are in place. Happily, we are looking to extend the rent freeze moratorium, so that's in effect. As you know, we are actively working towards the rent control piece and our township attorney working diligently on that front, continuing to move there. So we do have those pieces still in place. And of course, there are a number of individuals, including township staff, who are willing to help individuals should they have any issues or concerns around housing or other pieces. And I know, again, if you have other specific questions around any legal pieces that may come up around this, I think, you know, just please feel free to reach out to our township attorney, Mr. Krassik, and he can, you know, try and answer anything with any more specificity regarding any legal matters. Appreciate that. Okay, so with public comment closed, I will move us next on to a number of pending ordinances for second reading. Madam Clerk, can you please attest to everything being in correct order, please? I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I heard some feedback. Are we okay? Can you hear me well?
Can hear you. Yes, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I wish to report that all pending ordinances listed on tonight's agenda have been published and posted, and copies have been made available to the public as required by law. Item A, would you like for me to continue? I'm sorry?
Sure. Yep. No, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Item A is Ordinance O-2109. It's an ordinance to amend Section 347 zoning of the code of the Township of Montclair to clarify the intent of the inclusionary zoning ordinance and update the cash in lieu of contribution.
All right, great. And that's so, I so move that.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. I will now open, I'm going to open up the public hearing on this without objection, seeing no objection. Is there anyone in the queue? Mr. Stafford, please open that up, who wishes to be heard in relation to the proposed ordinance?
There is, Mayor. Caller with the number starting 973-330, it is your turn to comment, specifically with respect to item A, that is ordinance, pending ordinance O-21-09. Please keep your comments under three minutes. Right, and B. Okay, we'll be back to you in one second, not one second, but a few seconds. Stay with us, sir. Mayor, there is no one else in the queue.
Okay, thank you for that. Therefore, without objection, I'm going to close the hearing. Seeing no objection, the hearing is now closed. I will now open up to my council colleagues for any comments or questions on this second reading, hearing of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, just a question, is cash in lieu?
Councilman Price Abrams. Yeah, I got you, Councilman. Go ahead, Councilman Russo, and then we're going to Councilman Price.
Just a quick question, is cash in lieu, manager or attorney, is cash in lieu the same as pilot?
No, sir. It's cash in. Sorry, Ira, go ahead.
No, no. The cash in lieu here applies to situations where a project has an affordable housing requirement, and they might have to produce two affordable housing units, or I'm sorry, two and a half units, two and a quarter units. The, since you can't have a fractional unit, there's a cash payment in lieu of providing the actual physical quarter of a unit or half a unit. And that cash, that's what this amount is about.
Thank you. That clarifies. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Councilwoman Price Abrams?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to understand, I have the general idea that we are translating dollars for particular functions and bringing them into a more current financial framework. So I just want to follow if this $148,683, that's part of the cash in lieu piece, is it what's also referred to as $150,000 in the memo? I mean, it's just not I mean, it's just not precise. And I'm just making sure that we're talking about the memo itself references increasing the cash in lieu payment from $150,000 to $197,391. In the further extended part that comes out of the ordinance prior, it's not quite 150. It's some other number, 148,683.
I think that the 148,683 subsidy was established in 2009 and then it had been amended since. And now it would be amended to 197,391.
The 150 was an approximation.
Okay. It just, it wasn't as clear as it could have been because different reverences were made. So just for someone who hadn't reviewed it with great care with the committee or anything, I just wanted to understand. So what we're doing is just saying that the value of these things has changed. We're making them reflect that. And does this apply both for the single family as well as for the townhouses? Or there were two categories, I think. There was two kinds of housing, I think, that was referenced with these figures.
It's anytime that you're allowed to make a cash in lieu payment instead of actually providing units, which are fractional units. And I'm not sure exactly what you're asking, but this applies wherever you're translating units.
Well, sorry, the cash in lieu contribution for 2009 shall be one quarter of that number for a single-family house and townhouse. And then it went on to say something else is, shall be one eighth of for apartments or condominium units.
So that hasn't changed.
That hasn't changed. The base part of it has changed and therefore a fraction of it for one function or.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for the clarification.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I'll close council comments. Madam Clerk, would you please?
Counselor Cummings? Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovellis?
Yes.
Mayor Speller?
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have ordinance O-21-11, which is an ordinance amending Chapter 234-4 Parks and Playgrounds, Hours of Use. I'm going to open the public hearing without objection. Is there objection? Seeing no objection, the hearing is open. Is there anyone, Mr. Stafford, and I think I'm going to guess the right answer in the dialing queue, who wishes to be heard in this proposed ordinance?
There is, Mayor. Sir, we are back to you. I would ask, though, that you mute your listening device so that we can hear you and the comments that you want to make without feedback. So caller with the number 973330, it is your turn to comment.
One of these times I get it, and I wanted to comment on ordinance 12. Or 11, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. We'll come back to you in a few minutes. Mayor, there is no one else in the queue at this point.
Okay. All right, yeah, I will. Okay, with that then, without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing. Subjection. Seeing no objection, public hearing is closed. Open up to council comments and questions. Any council comments and questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't hear a movement.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovellis?
Yes.
Mayor Speller?
Yes. Next, we have ordinance O-21-12, which is an ordinance amending Montclair Code, Chapter 327, Article 3, Parking, Standing, Stopping, Adding and Removing Handicap Parking Spaces. And I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I'm going to open the public hearing without objection. Is there objection? Seeing no objection, is there anyone in the dialing queue who wishes to be heard in relation to the proposed ordinance? Mr. Stafford?
We'll see. Sir, caller with the number 973330. If you'd like to talk about ordinance O-21-12 and only that ordinance, this is the time to speak. Please just do us the service of muting your listening devices. Is this the ordinance that you'd like to speak about, sir?
Yes, it is. My name is Frank Zabaki. And it's to the handicap parking section of the ordinance, the added one at a .213 feet west from Seymour Street on Bloomfield Avenue to a .20 feet west. I don't think that's a regulation handicap spot. I think it has to be at least 24 feet on a parallel parking situation. And furthermore, according to the ordinance that will follow, you're actually going to put in any parking spot beyond that that is 23 feet. So something's wrong with the math and I could probably fix it on site, but you've got a problem as far as the wording of the ordinance is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public, anyone for public comments, Mr. Stafford?
There is no one else, Mayor.
All right, so again, without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing. The public hearing is closed. For open up to council comments, Mr. Karasik, if you could just review all items necessary. I know you thoroughly review all our handicap pieces and making sure they're in compliance. And I know that as the caller noted, in practical purposes, you know, maybe it'll be addressed, but just making sure all of the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. Appreciate it.
Sure thing. I do think this is how the ordinance came from, from the people who measure these things. But if the spot is in fact too short, we'll make it a little longer to cover. But at least this will satisfy that area as a handicap place and where someone has to, only a person can park who has appropriate tag.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Karasik. Any other council comments or questions? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please.
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovellis?
Yes.
Mayor Speller?
Yes. Next, we have ordinance O-21-13. This is an ordinance amending Montclair Code, Chapter 327, Article 3, Parking, Standing and Stopping, Adding and Removing Loading Zones and Establishing Drop Off Zones. I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I'm going to ask for the public hearing without objection. Is there objection? Public hearing is open. Mr. Stafford?
Sir, there is no one in the queue.
Okay, thank you. Without objection, I'm going to close the hearing. Is there objection? Hearing no objection, the hearing is closed. Any council comments or questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovellis?
Yes.
Mayor Speller?
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have new business resolutions. And the first is Resolution R-21-112, which is a resolution declaring an emergency and directing that ordinance O-21-11 take effect immediately. And I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, concerns or comments?
This is required to roll call vote, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Karasik. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovellis?
Yes.
Mayor Speller?
Yes. Next is Resolution R-21-113, which is a resolution requesting approval of items for revenue and appropriation pursuant to NJSA 40A:4-87. And I so move.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any questions, concerns or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovellis?
Yes.
Mayor Speller?
Yes. Next, we have Resolution R-21-114. Councilwoman Schlegel, would you mind giving the honors?
Yes, of course, Mayor. Thank you. Whereas invoices against the Township of Montclair in favor of the following persons for the amounts set opposite their respective names have been received duly audited and found correct. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Township of Montclair, the County of Essex, that said invoices be and they are hereby ordered paid and that checks be drawn by the Finance Department to the order of such persons for the amounts respectively and hereinafter stated on the schedule attached here to and made a part here of. This bill list is dated June 1st, 2021, to the amount of $12,017,801.28. And I so move.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any questions, concerns or comments? Councilwoman Price Abrams?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Speller. Mr. Manager, so I've just really combed through this today and there were some things I didn't have the opportunity to raise in advance. But let's see. On page three, I guess. Five, two, three. It's brand builders and it's earth machines and compost aerators, like $1,500, $1,540. Could you just explain what that is?
Those are materials and supplies for the Sustainability Officer to offer composting programs involving literally earth machines and aerators for composters.
Okay, great. So and we are making them available for purchase?
I'm not sure about that. I think it's probably part of the program.
Great, okay. The following page is one of our professional service contracts. So that's DeFrancesco and Bateman, that's special tax something. Just wondered what.
Correct. Handle tax appeals on behalf of the township.
Okay, thank you. Then on the next page, it's a large sum to do with workers' comp claims, Garden State Municipal JIF of $72,000 and change. Is that, does that come up every once in a while, like it's a big number? I just don't recall seeing it lately. It just seems.
The number fluctuates based upon the claims. But yes, we self-insure through the Garden State Municipal Joint Insurance Fund our workers' comp claims up to a point of excess liability.
So is this, is this higher than usual? Or if you can't even say that, I don't know.
It's tough, it's tough for me to say. The claims fluctuate depending on the month.
Okay.
So, Manager, if I might just explain, we have a self-insurance fund that meets and reviews each claim and then authorizes the payments of the workers' comp claims. So these have been vetted and proved that by the self-insurance fund, which is a meeting, a committee that meets or commission.
So is that, I'm sorry, that's a committee of our township? Or is part of this larger JIF that we're?
It's a township committee.
It's, okay. Thank you. And then just the Genova Burns, that's at the bottom of the same page there. It's not a large amount, but what are their legal services pertaining to?
They're on our special labor council.
Thank you. And then there's a $20,000 and change item for Hendrix appraisal. That's on the next page. Tax court services and tax assessments?
The Hendrix firm represents the township in tax appeals, in tax court matters, and its invoices reflect the work, the work that the firm does to prepare not only for tax appraisals, not only tax appraisals for tax appeals, but also for the various other work that the tax assessor does.
So it's another one. I know that we've certainly seen them as a firm that we, you know, pay the bill. But is this, is it on a cycle? Is it a high number right now or is it typical? I don't recall that we get it that often.
That, that number could be for several months. I'm not sure. It also fluctuates given the number of tax appeals that come, that are coming up before the court, because as matters are coming up, the firm's work will, of course, increase to prepare to go to trial.
Okay, all right.
Or settlement conference, as the case may be.
All right, good. Just a few more. On the next page, there's Jersey Chemicals. We have the first quarter blanket of $10,000 and change. What is Jersey Chemicals?
I don't know. I'd have to look that up. I don't know what page you're on. Could you tell me the page that you're on?
I'm sorry, yep. Um, eight.
Jersey Chemicals could be any one of many chemicals, including chlorine for our pools. It could be something for DCS. I'd have to look at the individual invoice.
Okay, all right. That's the nature of it, though. Let's see. Okay, I think the rest is all right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please.
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovellis?
Yes.
Mayor Speller?
Yes, thank you. Next, we have a number of items for discussion to move on our next agenda. So, Mr. Stafford, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Item number one, let me just mute folks so that we don't have feedback here. Item number one, the township has received a letter of intent from the New Jersey Department of Health to receive grant funding in the amount of $291,042 for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30 of 2022 for strengthening local public health capacity program 2022 within our township Nutley, Cedar Grove and Verona. As part of that program, the township's Health and Human Services Department recommends authorizing a professional services agreement with Essex Regional Health Commission by which two vulnerable population outreach coordinators would be based part-time in the township for approximately 28 hours per week, working to meet relevant deliverables of the grant. Item number one is the resolution that would authorize same. Item number two, further to that item, as noted, we have received letter of intent from the New Jersey Department of Health to receive significant grant funding. This grant is to support our Health and Human Services Department's continued activities during COVID-19 and must be used to hire or contract for vulnerable population outreach coordinators, a COVID-19 generalist, or to support other COVID-19-related activities, such as vaccination clinics. Item number two is a resolution that would authorize the acceptance of that grant. Item number three is a resolution that would authorize the township's application for a State of New Jersey Safe and Secure Communities Grant in the amount of $32,400. This funding would be used to offset part of the salaries of a police lieutenant in the Community Services Unit and a detective in our bureau who develop methods to combat the increase of crime by among, among other methods, participating in community engagement, using technology, training residents in domestic violence response and being visible faces in our community. The required match and funding would be satisfied by way of the two officers' salaries and benefits. The township has participated in this program for a significantly long time. It is essentially free money used, again, to offset the salary of two existing officers. Items four, five.
Manager, just a quick question. I'm trying to get through it all. I recall last year we did this, but it was for something else. This is great. This is for our community policing people, some staff that do great work, Tyrone Williams and all. But I'm still trying to get through it all. It has so many conditions and so many budget requirements. Is there something in here that requires us to do anything, like a mandate that we have to not in any way change our budget or reduce our staffing or anything? Is there something like that in here?
No, I think you're talking about a federal program that requires that if they, if the federal government funds, fully funds a police officer or firefighter for X amount of years, that we not reduce our staff. I don't believe that that's in this grant. The township has participated in this state program through the Office of the Attorney General for well over a decade. It is essentially free money to the township used to offset salaries of one superior officer in the one superior officer in the community services unit and one detective in our detective bureau.
That's what I thought. It's a great program, and I think we should accept it. I just got so many calls last year with misunderstanding of what we're doing. We're getting money from the Attorney General to do some good things here, which we should accept any resources we can. Just on that, I don't want to take an aside, but on the did we get any money? Are we getting any money? Are we committed from the state to get money for the body cams, which we have mandated as of today? To have the body cams. Everybody saw it on TV. Today's the day, right? And they said, oh, fifty-eight million dollars is being given to everybody. Well, that's the news, you know, with a couple of seconds of comment. But people are all asking me and I, you know, I want us to have the body cams. I've been an advocate for two years. But are, are the state dollars coming through, manager? You would know better than anybody. What's happening there?
We have received no word as of a state commitment for funding at present.
So we have to pay for buying them at least to start off, right? And then we have other questions?
Your point's a valid one, but the township, um, has already placed its order. We placed our order several weeks ago, uh, and I expect, uh, the cameras to be delivered forthwith, uh, and our staff to be, uh, equipped and, and trained. Uh, but yes, the township is absolutely laying out the money, uh, and paying for the, uh, body cameras itself and, and any, uh, funding received from the state will be, uh, placed to offset that, that money that we paid out.
So we need to do some lobby. All right. Thank you, manager. Thank you, Mayor.
Items four, five, and six are, um, emanate from the municipal clerk, the township clerk's office, so I defer to the gentle lady to, uh, brief you on each.
Thank you. Uh, items four, five, and six are resolutions authorizing renewal of culinary retail alcoholic beverage licenses for various establishment establishments throughout the municipality. State law requires these licenses be renewed on an annual basis on or before June thirty. Licenses currently listed on the resolutions have met the statutory requirements for renewal and are in compliance with Montclair Code Chapter seventy-four, alcoholic beverages. There are no issues to report in connection with these licenses, and therefore it is recommended that the mayor and council consider adopting these three resolutions at the next council meeting.
Uh, Madam Clerk, thank you for sharing that. Mr. Stafford and maybe Mr. Karasik, this will go to you. Um, I do know in looking at them that the item number four is very different than the other two and that the town has full authority and control over that versus the other two, which are state-driven, um, given the, given the dynamics. Uh, Mr. Karasik, uh, you know, maybe in time for, for when we look at this for the next meeting, uh, can you please, you know, come back with what conditions can the township add on, on, uh, the license that it fully controls in terms of any yearly, uh, cost assessments, any, uh, additional pieces that we want to add, you know, anything that's fully within our control? What leeway do we have and to take actions with regard to such license? Um, certainly don't expect you to have it all for, for us now, but if you can do an assessment of that, I know that is very different than the other two. So if you could just, uh, come back with what the differences are and what, uh, uh, what space the council has to operate with those differences, that'd be appreciated.
I will do that, Mayor, so that you'll have something, uh, at least a week before the next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Just to follow up on that, Mr. Mayor, if I can, um, for, for, um, and Mr. Karasik, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that's one of the, um, the exceptions to the, uh, to the overall, uh, liquor license, uh, established throughout the statute. The hotel is one of those.
Well, there's this, the statute, part of the liquor license, state liquor license statute imposes quotas on municipalities, and the quota is based upon population. Montclair has a quota of, of thirteen consumption licenses. However, hotels that have one hundred and fifty rooms can be authorized by the township outside the quota. So that license is in addition to our thirteen license quota that we have, and, um, it was authorized by an ordinance, which, when we amended our own, uh, liquor license ordinance to make, to create that license. Uh, I'm not sure exactly the difference is here, but I'll answer the mayor's query, uh, timely.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Mr. Karasik. Thank you. And I, I know that's, that was enumerated exceptions that are contained in that statute, uh, New Jersey liquor license statute, for lack of a better word. So I, I'd be interested in knowing that as well. And, and then also knowing too, if you could, Mr. Karasik, what the other enumerated exceptions are, like this particular, I know this is a special class, which is an exception to the general, if you will, for lack of a better word, liquor license. So if you could provide us with that information as well. And I know we have additional licenses outside of that rubric because of the train stations and New Jersey Transit and our ability to have those license separate as well.
Right. Those are special permits that are granted to certain, you know, governmental type agencies like New Jersey Transit, but I can explain that in, in what, in my response to the matter and to you.
Thank you, Mr. Karasik. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Stafford. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, sir. Next would be item eight, uh, which is a resolution that, given the state of emergency, given that the state of emergency in, in connection with the COVID nineteen pandemic continues to exist, would extend the temporary rent increase moratorium until September thirty of two thousand twenty-one.
Excuse me, Mr., Mr. Stafford, I believe you did miss item seven.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
No worries.
Must have skipped right over that. Thank you for pointing that out. Item seven is a grant insertion, and its resolution would serve as the township's request to the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, Director of the Division of Local Government Services, to approve the insertion of the grant listed and the referenced amount as an item of revenue in our two thousand twenty-one budget, as well as an appropriation in the same amount. This grant does not have a local match requirement. Moving then to number nine, the township owns the property located at three ninety-nine Orange Road and has received five grants from the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Hazardous Discharge Site Remediation Fund for site investigation and remedial action. Additional funding is required to conduct further work that is required by the NJDEP for remediation of this site, including excavation of petroleum product in specific areas and capping of the site. Township's professional consultant retained in connection with the project has provided a proposal for the required work at a cost of forty-three thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Item number nine is a resolution that would authorize the township's application for a hazardous discharge site remediation fund grant in that amount to have that work performed. Item number ten, on December fifteen of two thousand twenty, the township awarded a contract with a not-to-exceed amount of twenty thousand dollars to William Guarini Incorporated to provide plumbing services on an ad hoc basis. This amount was based upon a reasonable estimated number of billable hours for the contract period running through December thirty-one of this year. Demands, though, created by variance, experienced, but unforeseen events requiring plumbing work have caused the not-to-exceed amount to be approached. It is important to note that sufficient funds were allotted in the budget for plumbing work for the remainder of the year, so therefore additional funding is not being requested. What is being requested is authorizing of the amendment of the original not-to-exceed amount by forty thousand dollars, and this resolution would accomplish same. Item number eleven concerns our curbing project. Each year, uh, to secure the contractor's time and to commence curbing work in a timely fashion, given the weather, we award a contract, as we did on February sixteen of two thousand twenty-one, uh, in this instance, through the Morris County Cooperative Purchasing Council, to Cefalion Sun with a not-to-exceed amount of five hundred thousand dollars. Now, we know every year that our curbing is going to go beyond five hundred thousand dollars, but what we want to do is we want to book them to bring them into town so that they can start work as soon as possible, given the weather. So we, um, authorized, the governing body authorized a contract with a not-to-exceed amount of five thousand dollars, five hundred thousand dollars, and given that the budget was recently passed, this resolution, item number eleven, um, would, uh, authorize the amending of the not-to-exceed amount from five hundred thousand dollars to the full necessary amount of one-point-five million dollars. Again, uh, it is important to note that sufficient funds were allowed, allotted in the two thousand twenty-one budget for this curbing work, uh, so therefore additional funding is not being requested. This resolution would authorize the not-to-exceed increase.
If I could, I'm sorry, Mr. Stafford, real quick, um, having been involved in that process now for a number of years, it, it is a very good system that we have established in town for this, for these projects, because we are able to get contractors in as soon as the weather turns ahead of other municipalities quite, I don't want to say it too loud, because I don't know if other municipalities are listening out there tonight, but we've been able to get these contractors in very quickly once the weather turns in the spring, and it has given us a leg up, two legs up actually, going forward. So thank you, Mr. Stafford, and, and thank you to our finance team as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, it's a very good point, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, certainly we have always been very proud of the work we are able to do in terms of, um, you know, what many local councils are known for, right? Uh, paving roads, fixing curbs, uh, doing, doing the things that, uh, are going to affect lots of people every day too. So good, good work by all there. So thank you, uh, Mr. Stafford.
Uh, similarly, item number twelve is a resolution that would authorize the purchase of road resurfacing end materials from Shifano Construction Corporation, again, by and through the Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council in an amount not to exceed one-point-five million dollars, and this contract would be for the two, two thousand twenty-one, uh, milling and paving project. Items thirteen and fourteen, uh, are draft ordinances that would add a new chapter to the township code, uh, in the instance of title of, of item thirteen. Well, well, frankly, both would, uh, add a chapter, new chapter of the township code titled non-discrimination. In the instance of item thirteen, it would also add a, uh, chapter to that article titled unisex restrooms. In the instance of item fourteen, the, uh, chapter would also have added to it, I'm sorry, the article would also have added to it a chapter titled non-discrimination by township contractors against their employees, township employees, or applicants for employment. Uh, both draft ordinances were put forth by Councilor Yakobellis, and so therefore I defer to the gentleman.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Stafford, and with your permission, Mr. Mayor, um, I'll speak to these as well.
Absolutely.
Um, so I'd just like to, to ground us in a couple of things, um, that have happened recently. Um, so on April sixth, Arkansas became the first state in the United States to ban transgender-affirming healthcare. Earlier in the year, Tennessee passed a bathroom bill requiring businesses to have signs warning patrons that they may, quote, "encounter a trans people in public bathrooms." And in Alaska, just recently, they passed a bill to introduce, um, I'm sorry, to ban trans kids from sports, a complete ban, no nuance in that law whatsoever. So, you know, thinking about what's happening around the country, um, I'm really inspired by Montclair and the place that we are, uh, and our values. And I looked back and saw what actually the woman who called in earlier, Alexis Dickerson, and the Gender Sexually Alliance, Gender Sexuality Alliance had done at the high school five years ago. Um, created a petition, got sixteen hundred signatures, and got gender-neutral restrooms, uh, put into the high school, which was amazing. And again, that was five years ago. And, you know, some of you know that we are scored, like many other municipalities around the country, by the Human Rights Campaign. And, um, we've gone up in score every year, but we still remain at a seventy-eight out of a possible one hundred points alongside Princeton, Jersey City, Hoboken, lots of other places in the state of New Jersey that have a hundred. So I believe our values have always been there, but, um, with the help of the Human Rights Campaign and some other volunteers um, and the staff, like Mr. Bruce Morgan, our affirmative action officer, we've been able to identify gaps that there are, um, in our code. So I'm really proud tonight, um, and happy to have been able to work with, uh, in particular, um, Councilwoman Price Abrams and Council Russo and the Municipal Services and Communications Committee to, to piece together this legislation, to sit across the table from Deputy Mayor Herlock, uh, and talk about this, uh, in great detail. Um, and I think you had a wonderful conversation that I would advise our colleagues in Washington DC, if they could only negotiate and talk and deliberate the way we did. I think we'd get some things done in our nation's capital. Um, I've spoken, uh, with the, the rest of you at lunches and coffees and things like that. So specifically for the first one here, you know, the restroom bill, uh, this would require business establishments, including offices and places of public accommodation to make any single-user unisex restroom, uh, make it a unisex restroom gender-neutral. So any single user, this is not for multi-use, doesn't require a construction of anything new. It's just simply taking any restroom that's a single-user restroom in a public place and mandating by law that within six months it be signed as a gender-neutral or unisex restroom. Houses of worship are exempt. And as mentioned, there's a hundred and eighty days for establishments to update the signs, um, on there. Um, so, given the, there is a bit of an element of time sensitivity to this, one being it's Pride Month and, and let's, let's celebrate that, but that we do have a submission to, uh, the Human Rights Campaign that's due by the end of July, uh, and working back from that submission and the twenty days that it takes for a law to get into effect. I would like to make a motion, uh, tonight now on item thirteen to actually vote on this. So I'd like to move to introduce this bill.
And I second that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lori. I'm sorry. You said, I
Make your comment, sure.
Okay, sorry, okay.
Okay, so, so it's, it's been moved and seconded, so now I'm going to open up to your questions, concerns, comments. So now, Councilwoman, uh, Schleger, just so we
Okay, sorry. I didn't mean to step on anybody. Okay, thank you. Um, I, so would we require I, I read through the ordinance several times, but I just have some questions, so that maybe a couple of things that we've missed, or maybe we have answers to, um, currently. So will we require, uh, what is the timeframe for current businesses to, um, adhere to this ordinance?
So it would be after, after second reading and passage, and then after the twenty days for that law to go into effect, that there would then be another hundred and eighty days, six months for compliance. So roughly seven to seven and a half months, i- if this were to move tonight for first read.
Okay, and that would just, um, I mean signage, that would be the only expense incurred by the businesses with a sign on the door, basically?
That's correct.
Or painting, or however they, okay. Would, um, would this include supermarkets and private nursery schools, the museum and library?
Yes.
But not houses of worship? And why not? I mean, we, we just heard from so many, um, congregants at the Universal Unitarian Church. So why wouldn't we include houses of worship?
So houses, so I'll speak from my perspective, and then, um, Mr. Karasik could chime in as well from a legal perspective. Invite any, any other attorneys to chime in as well. My perspective is, um, any house of worship would be welcome to opt in, uh, and should opt in. Um, but I'd be concerned about legal exposure and litigation, and frankly, given the, the current makeup of the US Supreme Court, the last thing I would want to see is a, is a bill, um, where we are requiring a house of worship to have a gender-neutral restroom, uh, end up at the US Supreme Court uh, with, with the current, uh, composition of the Supreme Court and be challenged. So it's, for me, it's avoiding that legal exposure and the, and the legal challenge that would be there in an, in a, in an area that I think is unsettled law, uh, nationally.
Okay. And so you said, um, I asked about private nursery schools, like, you know, nursery schools start at three, four, five years old, so would, would there um, uh, gen- gender-neutral bathrooms for, for three-year-olds, some five-year-old? I'm, 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 I was just curious if that's part of this?
Yes, as it is the policy already, actually, for the school district for elementary schools, um, and pre-K, uh, to have gender-neutral restrooms for where there are single-user facilities. So if it's a multi-user facility, if it's a multi-user men's room or multi-user women's room, those do not change. It's where there is any single-user, uh, restroom. So just a one person, one occupancy only. The, the most typical scenario we see or I've seen in terms of research for what's happened around the country is most of the time you're looking at changing handicap restrooms or restrooms that say family restrooms get changed to say gender-neutral. And in the case of a lot of business establishments in Montclair, and particularly new ones, if you look at the back of, I'm going to just use Fallborge, for example, there are four restrooms in the back of Fallborge, or three or four. there are four restrooms in the back of Falmorg, or three or four, and they're all individual restrooms. The back of Salute de Bistro is two individual restrooms. So those restrooms would be just late, would change to say gender-neutral or unisex or all-gender restroom.
Okay, would, and go forward when, would we require, for new, somebody, I get a lot of feedback, I don't know. Okay, ever, so for new construction, would we require bathrooms to have urinals and toilets?
This bill doesn't contemplate any, that specific requirement. It also does not mandate that new construction create single-user gender-neutral restrooms. If in their plans they were creating single-user restrooms, those restrooms would have to be labeled gender-neutral. But they could, a new business could opt to still have multi-user, gender-specific restrooms under this law.
Okay, and maybe this question would be for our attorney. So how would, I've, I've heard people speak in the past when somebody has to use a facility, like, for instance, you could go to Starbucks, they will allow anybody to use their bathroom, whether you buy a cup of coffee or not. You don't have to be a patron to use the bathroom at Starbucks. But other places, you do have to be a patron for, you know, they have rules. Would those rules still be in effect? Do we, the people have, I have heard people say they are discriminated against if they go in to use the bathroom in a clothing store or a salon. And if they, if, and they feel that they're not able to do that sometimes because of their gender or what have you, but does that have, is that changing at all? Stores are, I'm sorry.
I was just going to answer you, this ordinance doesn't affect that issue. I mean, if a restaurant doesn't let anyone come in to use their bathroom except for customers, this doesn't change that. If the restaurant lets white people in and not African-Americans in, well, they have a different problem. So that's not the problem that this law is intended, this ordinance is intended to address. This is strictly about making sure that single-use restrooms are correctly labeled so that they're non-discriminatory.
Okay, okay, thank you, and thank you, Councilman Yakabelis, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, concerns, comments?
Yeah. So I really believe that we need to have a community education on this. I say that because I remember when the, when the high school put in the gender, the open gender bathrooms, there was an issue where, at the freshman building, where two students got into, it became a very big issue. And the reason was because it wasn't educated, at middle school students, when it was introduced and passed, were not educated. So when they got to the high school, they were not aware. So I'm being very cautious here, because I look at something similar happening at the library, where students, I think we really need to consider making sure that the community is aware of this change, particularly with buildings that we are responsible for. And I, I do have concerns about pre-K, just out of thinking of raising my own children. But that's me, when I'm not saying that it's, you know, that I'm against it. But I just feel like, and Peter, we had this discussion, that I'd like to have a little more communication with the public. Robin, you made the point that a lot of members who called in, well, all of them were from the same church. So, you know, I'd like to see a little bit more public discourse, not that I'm against this. I think, you know, a lot of times we, we hear in Montclair, you know, particularly I hear this tonight about, you know, being progressive or being a part of this and things. And, you know, I remember in 1982, we had two gay African-American cheerleaders, and it was accepted. And so I don't think acceptance has ever been an issue. And I did hear what the young lady said about her own daughter. But I know, having raised three, three kids who've gone through this system, who've had friends of, you know, all likes, Mom, I get back to my concern that we really need to make sure that the public is fully aware. And also consider that at our bars and restaurants, a lot of times, there are people who are not from town. And so, you know, as much as the sign says it, I think, you know, that is the first step. But I just want to make sure that I'm on record as saying, for me, we need to really make sure that the public is aware of this. And I don't feel that we've accomplished that by, you know, bringing this up and all of a sudden passing it. And Peter, I totally get your point about the Equity Index that you, you, from day one, had discussed that you'd like to see us do well on, or better on. But that's just, that's just something for me, because I remember being on the board and having to deal with that issue. It wasn't, it wasn't easy. But it was also just a matter of taking something that was passed into high school and really not passing it down to the elementary and middle schools so that, once they got to the high school, they were aware. So that is something that I'm very uncomfortable with, and so I'm just going to leave it at that for now.
I see, I'm going to go to Councilwoman Price Abrams, who'll saw here, and then I see the Deputy Mayor. So that's the next two.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, listening to all the comments, I want to make sure we're actually all on the same page of what this does and doesn't do, because I had some opportunity with the Municipal Services Committee to have reviewed it, again, with staff and understanding what this particular thing does. And I had been in the high school and saw that there, when they changed the restrooms, those are multi-user restrooms, so Council, Councilman Cummings, I'm not sure if you're referring to that. And in this scenario, we're talking about where there is a door that leads to a single toilet. It's for one person to occupy. And whatever the sign might have said before, I know Council Yakabelis gave some of the examples of what they might presently say, but it would literally just suggest that anyone can walk in there of any gender or any non-conforming gender, like any human being can walk in and use that restroom, and it's not designated for men or women or any other way. And I think it's, it's, it's really simpler than perhaps the conversation is suggesting, because it doesn't touch upon some of the same things, for example, that came up through the schools. With regard to the preschool, it's for the adults in that space. I'm not sure if the children use the same ones, but if it's a single-use toilet, I would assume boys and, little boys and little girls and, and children who identify differently, perhaps, or don't, would all use the same restroom. If it's a multi-user thing, this doesn't apply. If it's a single-use toilet, it's probably what they commonly do anyway, whatever the sign says. So I'm not sure how much in practice it's changing, and I just wanted to highlight that, because I don't think it's doing, for example, what I noticed happened at the high school, which was a multi-user restroom facility that I had observed in the past. And so in that way, I, I don't know if further discussion might bring some of the open questions to a greater understanding, and if others have opportunity to share that. But I do value what Councilman Yakabelis has tried to do in terms of meeting this goal with the Montclair or the Municipal Equality Index, and that this would be, I think, I'm going to say easy, but I don't mean to dismiss anybody's concerns that are real and heartfelt. I just think it's actually something that we, not just can do, but I think it's, it's one that's not really imposing a great burden in any way and doesn't change very much, but for the, the more inclusive signage, that was my comment, thank you.
I could appreciate that, Counselor.
Just, just, just only because I called it out before and he had his hand up, let me go to the Deputy Mayor, and then I'm coming right back to Councilman Cummings. So let's go to Deputy Mayor Herlock, go to Councilman Cummings, and then if I see someone else's hand go up, I'll put you in the queue, just so.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, since I think Mr. Cummings wanted to respond to Ms. Price Abrams, as they say on TV, I'll yield the balance of my time, and if you'd come back to me.
Absolutely, just wanted to respect everyone's hand. So Councilman Cummings, you're up.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and I think to the point that you made, Council Price Abrams, that is my, that is my question. Do we know what the preschools have? Have they been asked, have we had discussions with them? Because again, this is a change that we're making town-wide, but I'm not sure the entire community is aware. You know, it's not just restaurants, so, you know, there may be some pre-Ks that are okay. I don't know what their bathroom setups are, but that's my point, I don't know. And so I'd like for us to know before instituting something that requires an immediate, because Counselor asked that we immediately pass this, that requires an immediate change. And so I just think that's, you know, you even made me consider this from another level with that point you made.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. Yakabelis, for your, for your comments as well. I, we, we did cover a lot of ground at that meeting at my office, lo those many months ago, as they say on TV. And I appreciate your, your time. And I also appreciate your, your passion for these issues and, and the way that you've, you know, garnered the support that you have. I have to say here, though, I just got this ordinance, draft ordinance, as many of us did in our draft, in our packets on Thursday night. And I know you had reached out to me earlier today around 1:30, Mr. Yakabelis, and I'm sorry I didn't get back to you, you had told me at that point you wanted to move it tonight. I was in court all day with clients in virtual court, so I didn't get a chance to get back to you. While you and I have some common ground here, for sure, and we've talked about some of these proposals, and I look forward to working with you going forward on it. I'm going to have to abstain if we're going to move this tonight, though, because I just got this Thursday night. I haven't had a chance to digest it, I haven't spoken to any of the businesses or the community, any of the school leaders, as Mr. Cummings had indicated. And just on a practical matter, not even getting into the substance at this point, I, I need to be able to look at this and to have those conversations. So I appreciate, again, you moving this and bringing this to the, to the forefront. But this is, I think this is a big step, I want to talk more about it, I'd like to get more information. I have many questions, I won't raise them here this evening because of what I, you know, my position, as I just indicated, but that's where I'm coming from tonight. And I do look forward to working with you, Mr. Yakabelis, going forward on many of these other issues that you and I have discussed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. I see Councilman Yakabelis.
Thank you, everybody, for the comments, I appreciate that. I would just note that my motion tonight is to, is to make this a first read. And then we have three weeks until it would appear on another council meeting agenda for a second reading on June 22nd. So it's 21 days for us to deliberate and have conversations, for the public to ask questions. There's, of course, public comment that night, there would be public comment for this meeting. And then again, 20 days after that second reading and possible passage, the law would go into effect, and then there's another six months for businesses to comply. We already have a township policy, Mrs. Stafford and Mr. Karasik, and correct me if I'm wrong, but our, our public facilities already practice this. I understand the school does, I know our, I believe our town hall, our other municipal facilities do. But I just want to make that point, that this is, yes, we all received this on Thursday, the text. I've seen several versions of it. I'm making the motion to have our first reading be tonight. We have three weeks, 21 days, to deliberate with each other, to get public comment, to solicit that feedback, have that dialogue, before having to actually vote on enacting it. So no one's on the hook for voting for something to put it into law or not, until that vote. And then we've got another 20 days, followed by another 180 days, which is a lot of time to educate our business community, to bring everybody along on that journey. And I plan on taking the lead and working with our township communications to make sure that we are informing the public of what the change is here. And you should know as well, all of you, that I've solicited a lot of feedback from, from business leaders, from our, our business districts, from individual business owners. And I often find I get a lot of feedback that's from, from women who say, oh, thank goodness, I don't have to wait on a long line anymore. You know, I was uncomfortable going, is it that single-user restroom right there? Because it says, it says men, and the women's line is always three times as long as the men's line. So the feedback has actually been really positive that I've gotten from the business community. So I'm still going to make my motion for first reading for tonight.
Look, we, we've got a motion, it's moved, it's seconded, this is debate on the motion, so. With that, any other, I see, I see Mr. Deputy Mayor, and I don't see anyone else in the hand yet, so go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate where you're coming from, Mr. Yakabelis. I'm fully aware of the process and how it works over the last eight and a half, nine years now. However, we, we had, I think, a good policy over the last eight years, where before the train leaves the station, we were all on board, so to speak. And I understand there's a lot of various stops for input throughout this process, and I, I respect that. And I respect the fact that you had the conversations with the business, you know, leaders and community members and citizens. I would like that opportunity, too, actually, before I vote on this for the first time, and that's where I'm coming from. So I just want to make sure we're on the same page, that we have a lot of mutual respect for each other. I understand the process, and I'm still not comfortable having just received this Thursday night and realizing this afternoon it was going to be put up for a first vote. So thank you, Mr. Yakabelis, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Okay, any other questions, concerns, or comments?
Good question, Mayor.
Councilman, Councilman Russo?
I think Peter just referred to something I see at the shore continually, especially in the Asbury Park, where I go, we have a locker on the beach. Is this going to in any way help women who are lined up 10 times the line for the men's rooms? You mentioned that, Peter, but I don't think this is going to help with that. But I'd like to do something about that, because all I can see is a continual suffering by women just waiting to use restrooms at the shore, which could easily be tripled in size and capacity. And the men's rooms are, you know, very, very quickly used and not aligned. I can't believe what I see in this day and age, that women have to. I always go to those lines and say, why don't we just get a committee together and stop having this kind of, you know, inconvenience for people who are trying to use bathrooms at the beach? Anyway, that's just an aside, but I'm supportive of this, because I've seen this and known about this, I guess, maybe longer than others. I just have been aware, our services committee has had, you know, discussions, and maybe that's part of the issue, that we've had that among three of us. So I'm comfortable moving ahead, but just wanted to make that comment about how women are suffering discrimination still at the beaches of New Jersey, sure, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Okay, seeing none, I will, you know, also just say that, and certainly hearing all of my council members' comments and feelings, I think, much like most conversations, it's an "and". I think, you know, listening to everyone's comments, I think, you know, valid points are made, you know, appreciate everyone's thoughts on the matter. You know, going back, I will say, I remember looking at the, the score you noted, Councilman Yakabelis, and seeing where we, you know, scored as Montclair, and, you know, somewhat with a surprise in terms of the inclusive community that we have and the things that we do. I think we would all agree that scores don't always tell the story. I know that, you know, talking with a lot of people in terms of, you know, why everyone loves living in Montclair, it's, it's for reasons that are maybe beyond that score. But, but that aside, you know, then if there are ways to increase that score, to be more reflective of the community, who we are, and it's not just about points, but, but if there's ways that, that work towards that, I think we'd all be supportive of it. With that said, as you know, receiving that information and having that conversation with you early on, ask that our, our subcommittee that, that you guys have been working with now, review this, come back with recommendations, work with township staff to see what we could do, see if we can make improvements in any areas, and then come back and report out to the council what actions we could take to move the needle in that regard, you know, specifically around score, yes, but also hopefully substantively making a difference to some of the pieces that are out there. You know, so with that in mind, and certainly understanding all the concerns that have been put forward in a lot of different ways, you know, I do look at this one and, and would say, you know, two things. I understand some of my council colleagues' trepidation, and you just get something, and, you know, hey, move it and vote on it. And, you know, yes, there's some time, but, but, you know, we, I think allowing that space and time is a good thing. But that said, I will also note, and I know Councilman Yakabelis, you cited a couple of businesses, so I'll give a big shout out to the Montclair House Grill, because they do have two single-use bathrooms, right? And they just say, anyone, anyone wants to go and use them, right? I think a lot of places do this, because they understand it's not that big a burden. We're talking a single-use restrooms here, you know, so the restrooms where one, one individual would be going in. I do think, and I think Council- Um, I do think, and, and I think Councilman Schlegel, you noted, you know, the signage change. And yeah, we are in a pandemic coming through. It's another cost. So, so some challenges there. Fair point. Um, but, but I, I think on balance, you know, taking a restroom that is for a single use, um, you know, and instead of having, you know, let's just assume two, and one says male, female, uh, dedicating them both for, for any individual to use, uh, doesn't seem that big a lift. And, and there's some ancillary benefits, uh, Councilman Russo and others are alluding to. Uh, but, but I also think even putting that aside, and for the real core of this, uh, allowing anyone to just go in and, and use a restroom, it's a single-use restroom, you know, anyone should be allowed to use. I, I think it's, it's pretty straightforward, um, as well. I, I do agree with that. Uh, so I have absolutely, you know, I'm, I'm fully supportive of that. I, I think that's the right way to go. I, I do still, you know, and we'll note, and, and maybe to the committee, you know, let's, uh, there's a reason why we have a lot of these things. Doesn't always arc this way on, on a discussion agenda and then give everyone time. So, so just want to honor that in as many ways as we can normally. Uh, but for this issue, um, you know, I will have to concur and say, you know, moving forward, uh, on this now, um, it, it seems like a reasonable thing to do. I think it's an important step to, uh, codify something in terms of the values that we represent as a community. And, and quite frankly, even the ones I'm hearing say, there's, there's some reservations. It's not about that. It's about just time and process. But, um, you know, along those lines and weighing it on balance, you know, I do think there, there's, there's something to be said for showing there's a level of urgency around saying these are what our values are, uh, on, on, on this issue and so many other issues such as this. So, uh, with that, I, I, I will be, uh, again, appreciative of the committee's work, and, and thankfully you took that up. And, and you know, happy to see where we've come from where, um, you know, I asked you guys to take a look there from the, the scores that we received the last time. Um, and, uh, I, I will be supportive of, of this moving forward, uh, and this, uh, this, uh, motion that we have on the floor. So I just want to note that as well. So with that, any other questions, concerns or comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Cummings?
No.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Abstained for the reasons I indicated.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel?
Yes, and I look forward to further discussions and tightening up the ordinance a little bit with some of my questions.
Counselor Jakobalis?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes.
Uh, next, I know we have a resolution. Uh, I think, Mr. Stafford, you already read it and, and turned it over. But, uh, uh, Councilman Jakobalis, would you like to speak to the next one as well, please?
Uh, yes, Mayor. So, uh, as the manager mentioned, um, this is creating, um, new, new code. Um, and specifically would address and prohibit discrimination in hiring practices on the basis of gender identity and expression. So we already, as a township, protect on the basis of sexual orientation. This would further enumerate and protect on the basis of gender expression and gender identity. And it also adds, um, a section just in terms of, uh, our contracting. So in our bidding and third-party, uh, contracting processes, uh, protecting on the basis of sexual orientation, gender identity and expression. So all three. Um, I will note, these are already practices. Um, we have this language. I worked with the Township Attorney's Office to, you know, make sure, uh, those particular groups were enumerated in, in our addendums, in our contracts. Um, so this is a matter of codifying in law what we actually already practice. And the township manager, uh, several months ago, uh, at our committee's recommendation, also updated the township's equal employment opportunity, uh, policy to again enumerate uh, and protect on the basis of sexual orientation, gender identity and gender expression. So this is again, just codifying what our policies into law. Um, and so with that, and given the, again, the timeline for, um, submission and giving Mr. Morgan, our affirmative action officer and LGBTQ community liaison, the time he needs to pull together the paperwork, um, for that submission, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, introduce this bill tonight as well.
I'll second that. I'll second that. Being that this...
It's been moved, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions, concerns or comments?
Mayor, all I want to say is it's very easy. We've got our own rules about people not being discriminated. So we're gonna tell any contractor that we hire and spend money with, that they have to abide by those same rules of non-discrimination and in all the areas that are listed, not just, you know, uh, gender issues, but it's just terrific reinforcement of what we say to our own applicants for employment. Anybody who's gonna be contracted by us needs to abide by those same fairness and equity rules. That's why I second it. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, sir. Any other questions, questions, concerns or comments? Uh, Councilwoman Price Abrams.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, I really just re- reiterate as well that I think it's an appropriate statement of our values. I think, uh, has been noted, it's pretty much already being done. It's now making it formal. So I'm thinking in some ways it's a kind of pro forma thing to do. Um, and then maybe to amplify what Councilman Russo just said. We have, we do a lot of work with, uh, contractors in, in different ways, uh, to accomplish the work of our town. And I think having them, uh, fulfill on these same values is actually, uh, meaningful here. So I, I do, uh, value us moving it forward tonight and moving it forward, period. Thank you.
Any other? I'm just looking on the screen. Any other questions, questions, concerns, comments? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel?
Yes.
Counselor Jakobalis?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Right. Thank you very much, everybody, uh, for all of that. I believe that can, I'm sorry, uh, who's?
Uh, Mr. Stafford? Yeah, they find, uh, hear the voice on the screen, Mr. Stafford. Take a second. Uh, yes, go ahead, Mr. Stafford.
That concludes my, uh, discussion points. However, I do want to say that we have, uh, a cause to commence an executive session when you, as Chair of the meeting, uh, are ready. And the, uh, two, uh, points to be considered are, uh, number one, a personnel issue with respect to a committee appointment. And number two, a matter falling within the attorney-client privilege, um, given that confidentiality is required in order for the township attorney to exercise his ethical duties as an attorney. Uh, so when you're ready, uh, please, please know that, that that needs to happen.
Mr. Manager, uh, as well, I think since we are going into closed session, I'd sent a memo to the council regarding a settlement of litigation. And I would just like to bring that up in the closed session briefly, since we are going into closed session. So it would be the settlement of, uh, litigation. And just for the record, it's Constellation versus Township of Montclair, Constellation Energy versus Township of Montclair.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Uh, so before we do, and, uh, you know, uh, being mindful of, uh, however long that may or may not take, uh, if we can keep it somewhat brief, I'll just go around the horn. If anybody has any comments, uh, before we go in, so that you can share those, the public can hear, um, before we go into executive session. So I'll go around the horn. Why don't I start with our Deputy Mayor? Uh, Deputy Mayor Herlock, start with the first, go around. Uh, any?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll be quick, Mr. Mayor, because we don't know how long this executive session will last. So I appreciate the opportunity. Uh, first off, I want to, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, for my appointment to the, uh, the full-time school task force. Uh, look forward to having our first meetings with that. I know we're gearing up. Um, thank you, uh, for, uh, allowing me to, uh, to attend in your stead in, in that important endeavor. Uh, also, uh, want to say that, uh, we, uh, uh, working very hard together to, uh, as many have seen, to revamp, uh, the Bellevue Theater in Upper Montclair. Look forward to continuing those discussions as well. That, that is, uh, one of the many jewels in the crown of, of Upper Montclair Village. And I'm glad to see that there's discussions underway on that front. And then also, um, you know, I know many of us were at the Memorial Day service yesterday. Um, always, uh, it was great to, to be in person again at something and, and to see so many of the residents of Montclair to come out to show their respect on, on a sacred and hallowed day. And, uh, wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought you did an excellent job. I learned a lot yesterday from your speech. A lot of history there about Montclair and our, our role, uh, going forward. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Uh, no, listen, uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor, thank you for saying that. And, uh, I appreciate that. It's obviously it's such a, yeah, it's a big, big, big important piece in terms of speaking at something like that. And, uh, you know, you want to make sure you do it justice. So thank you for those comments. It's appreciated to say, uh, I appreciate that. And I will, I'll give you the credit. I know at the theater, when we went over there, um, look at the marquee where it said, "Coming soon, a theater near you." Well done. I know that was your idea, and it was very catchy. So, uh, Tuesday, nice job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just trying to be, you know, brilliant and incisive, but thank you.
Career there ahead of you, so it looks good. Um, next, I'll, I'll go to, uh, second ward, uh, Councilman Schlegel, please.
Sure. Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I, um, I had the opportunity this past weekend to go to the, uh, for one last visit to the Charles Schultz House, which is on the corner of Claremont and, uh, North Mountain, an historic house that's been, been in our town for many, many years. And they had a big, um, sale, the Montclair Historical Society, um, History Center, sorry, um, had a, a big house sale. And, um, it was a, a lot of fun walking through the halls. I'm sure Deputy Mayor, um, Herlock would agree. I met him, I bumped into him in the, in the library. And, um, it was quite, quite a, it was, it was a little emotional to be able to go through that house one last time. Um, I did buy a couple of trinkets for, um, Mentos and happy to make that donation to the, um, historic, um, the History Center, sorry. But I'm so pleased that the house is going to, has been sold to a private family that's going to restore the house. And, um, I'm, and I'm so pleased to hear that. Uh, and the house will remain intact, which, which is really important to our, to our town. So, uh, it's, it's very thrilling to, to watch a transformation, um, you know, as it goes through the process. And, um, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Next, let's go to Councilwoman Price Abrams.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm out of town, and so I'm sorry to have missed, uh, that Memorial Day opportunity. And, um, I know that's a very meaningful coming together of people in our town. So, um, I'll look forward to, uh, listening back to the remarks as were referenced. And, um, but just to, to do reference a few other events, one that passed, the Lantern Festival that the AAPI community had put together, now a week or two ago, uh, was such an extraordinary coming together at Edgemont Park. It was beautiful. It was meaningful. And it really just brought people from, I'm sure, all over town and beyond, uh, out. So I think that was very significant. And, and I think they're, they're bringing some attention to, you know, community issues that they feel as, as, um, anyway, members of that, uh, community who've been somewhat embattled. Um, in a similar vein, the Baha'i faith had, uh, reached out, some of us had a conversation with some of their leaders, and they were gonna host a race amity day, um, on Saturday, June 13th, from noon to one, over at the MLK Memorial, uh, Initiative Park. So something people can put on their calendars. And, um, of a couple of the highlights, I know someone else has mentioned, um, how good it was to be in person. And I, and I was glad to see that the municipal building itself has been reopened to the public, uh, with certain, I guess, masking conditions and such. But again, my hope that we might soon be meeting as a council, um, all together as well. So I look forward to those discussions and, um, and seeing the public in person during these kinds of meetings, as well as interacting with you colleagues in a more face-to-face, in-person way. Talk to you all soon.
Sure. Thank you. You're not, you're not signing off, Councilman. You almost sound like you're waving goodbye. You're not allowed to hit the end button yet, you know, just so you know. All right. Um, I thank you for that. And, and certainly, uh, for the AAPI, uh, Lantern event, uh, you know, Councilman Russo, I know you, you spoke on behalf of all of us. Uh, you know, we were all there and appreciated your comments and did a great job and, uh, really reflecting, um, you know, what we stand for as a council, certainly as a township. So just offering that, uh, uh, that as well. But, uh, yes, we all, nice to see many, many of us there at that too. Um, next, let's go to, uh, fourth ward, uh, Councilman, uh, Cummings.
Hey, thank you, Doc, uh, Mayor. Um, real quick, uh, this weekend, the African-American Heritage Foundation will be having a car caravan instead of their traditional parade. Grand Marshals, uh, Myrna Hinton, Margaret Stewart, and Ambassador, uh, will be Charles Brady. Think of, uh, folks from Montclair are very familiar with the Hinton name, as well as Ms. Stewart and, and Mr. Brady, who, uh, was at St. Peter's Claybrook Church and has a strong, powerful history in the black community. I'm sure Mr. Scantleberry can, can attest to the efforts that he put back in the 60s, um, when, you know, he really fought for civil rights and was actually a friend of Martin Luther King and Coretta Scott King. And Ms. King even wrote a letter to him and support after he had stood in a sit-in, uh, at Glendale Field School, where he literally slept in the school for six nights to, uh, for equality of the building and particularly the Head Start program. But more importantly, well, not more importantly, but I say graciously, um, we will be putting up a plaque in honor of longtime barber, uh, Celeste Young, who, uh, was just a pillar in this community, particularly for the wisdom and leadership that he showed to African-American males. Uh, Mr. Young is a treasure in Montclair. Someone who lived in Brooklyn, but opened up his shop every day at 6:00 AM, rain, snow or shine. He was, he was there. And, um, this is something that I think you'll see the community come out to. And I think it'd be a great opportunity for all of the council to attend. It'll be Saturday, about 11:30. At the corner of Orange Road and Cedar Avenue. Um, it's, it's just something that, uh, I think will be a great way to honor someone who means a lot to the community, uh, particularly to those who grew up here.
Councilman, uh, next, let's go to Councilman Russo.
Thank you. And thanks for your comments about AAIP, API. I just was looking at the program again. The young lady on here put a lot of this together, uh, Serena Lee. And she's a high school sophomore, gonna be a senior at Montclair High School. And she just told me today, when she was interested in serving on the Civil Rights Committee, that she, um, is the head or going to be the head of the robotics team. And they're dealing with, uh, they're creating a tremendous, uh, example of robotics helping people with disabilities. So, you know, we connect everything, seniors, disabilities, civil rights. We do all these things on our advisory committees and commissions. But I just wanted to give a shout out to Serena Lee at Montclair High School for that work with, um, with the Lantern Festival and AAPI. And, you know, we're getting more, more involvement from that community. Um, what I wanted to do today also was just thank the mayor for that great speech at the Memorial Day tribute. I had a lot of trouble keeping the flag from falling. So you may have seen a picture of me holding it. I didn't usually don't hold the flag. That's maybe the Boy Scouts will hold. But I definitely had to keep holding it when we had such wind. But I want to remind everybody, whenever you go to that monument, if you look on the, uh, World War II monument, which is the large plaque, and on one side is the Vietnam monument, the other side is the Korean War. And of course, the First World War is what the entire, um, you know, statue and, and the, uh, the obelisk is, it's my father's cousins are, are, um, Frank and Vincent Russo are listed there. There's two Russos on that, uh, big monument. It's kind of hard to see, but two of them are there. And my father used to tell me all the time about how those were cousins of his family members. And I'm happy to see them on there, having served in the Second World War. And my father-in-law, as I always remind people, was a Pearl Harbor survivor. So several years ago, when I was mayor, we had my father-in-law, Anthony Sikora. My wife's wonderful father come and speak and be present at a Memorial Day service. It's such an important service. Veterans Day also we do in November. But Memorial Day, we remember all these soldiers who fought, men and women in all of these wars. It's just, you know, terrible to see that we have lost so many, but we remember them on these monuments. And I just want to remind everybody that 9/11 is coming up this September. It'll be a 20th anniversary of 9/11. We haven't done anything formal for a while. We always gather at the monument. It's Watchon Plaza, small monument we have for, uh, about 10 people who passed from our town. But there's still a few families here who are, you know, happy we have that nice little monument, and they go there on that day. This time this year, it would be, uh, I think Saturday. So we have to decide what we're gonna do. But I think we should start planning, and I'm directing this more to the manager, because we decided that every 10 years at least, we'll do something more substantial. This year will be the 20th year. Uh, 9/11 has to be observed tragically. But Montclair lost more people than any other town in Essex County. Since I was my first year as mayor, I feel very strongly about us observing that. So let's think about that. Thank you, Mayor.
Sir, uh, and now Councilman Jakobalis.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Councilman Russo, I, I would back you up on that. It was 20 years ago that I was a search and rescue volunteer at Ground Zero on 9/11. And I cannot believe- And I cannot believe it's been 20 years. Um, and I'm still dealing with some of the health effects, certainly the mental health effects from that. Couple of things, uh, yesterday I did a, an honor Memorial Day. I do this every year. I compete in a, in a national or actually international workout competition to honor a fallen soldier, Mike Murphy, who took 15 bullets and managed to hold his position and take enough time to warn his colleagues that the enemy was approaching over the radio, uh, before he took his last breath. And so we do this pretty aggressive workout to see how good you can do. And you have to just tell yourself the whole time, don't give up, don't give up, don't give up. Um, so that is how I spend every Memorial Day, uh, here in Montclair as part of a group, uh, that I love working with. I want to congratulate, um, Ray's Luncheonette and Angelica Flores, uh, for, you know, receiving one of only 25 grants, uh, from American Express and the only restaurant in New Jersey to receive a grant from American Express for historic preservation. Um, I've thanked, and the media, of course, but I want to thank you again, Councilor Cummings for the suggestion. Uh, James Cotter, uh, my friend for working with Angelica on the paperwork and submission, and all my friends at American Express for giving Ray's the serious consideration. Uh, it's a big deal, $40,000. Again, do a lot of really cool stuff with that money at that restaurant. Um, last few weeks, we've all been around, we've all been busy. I've loved seeing all of you out and about, uh, Disability Pride, AAPI Festival. Some of us have been on the Unitarian Universalist Restorative Justice Calls. And I can go on and on, but I won't. Um, we know that, you know, there, that, uh, there is going to be a ballot referendum on elected versus appointed school board. I have been in talks with the PTA Council, with Montclair Local, with the League of Women Voters and with Vote Montclair to organize one or two forums this fall. Uh, so we will be, uh, working to announce those soon, uh, in terms of having two different forums, uh, to discuss this issue later this year. It's very important that, I think, the community at large be really educated on what this change could potentially mean, understand the history and the legacy, uh, behind why we have an appointed board, the real value there, um, as well as, you know, just the debate over if now is the time to consider changing things or not. Um, so the goal there being to make sure everybody is making an educated decision. Um, and two other points real quick. Uh, Friday, we will have, uh, the pride flag raising at Town Hall at three o'clock. Everyone is invited and welcome. We'll have refreshments to follow. I will note that this is the first time we are, and possibly any town in New Jersey, is raising a, a flag that's inclusive of trans, non-binary, black and brown colors to signify, uh, our support for the expansive LGBTQ community. I think that's a big deal in and of itself, and I'm really proud of our town for that. And June 8th is the primary. Whether you're Democrat or Republican, uh, encourage everyone to vote in the primary on June 8th. And remember that this is not automatic vote by mail. If you haven't already applied to vote by mail, you will have to vote in person. Um, if you are, if you are a regular vote by mail voter, meaning you voted by mail regularly before last year's pandemic vote by mail, um, then you'll still receive the ballot to vote in by mail. But if you are not, then you'll need to go back to voting in person. Uh, so just a reminder that June 8th is Election Day, is a primary day. So please get out and vote. Thank you.
Councilman, uh, let's go to our township, uh, township manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, mindful of the fact that we have, uh, an executive session, I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Deputy Manager?
Yes, I just wanted to add to what Councilor Cummings was saying about, uh, Mr. Celeste Young. He, he, I can't say enough about Mr. Young. He was a stalwart of the community. Uh, his wisdom was unmatched, his demeanor exuded strength, character and knowledge. And even if you had a dad, he was a father figure to you. Um, he was teaching you when you didn't know you were being taught, just in his conversations. And the honor that's going to be bestowed him on Saturday is well deserved, well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Township Attorney?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, as Councilor Yakovels already noted, next Tuesday is the primary election. Uh, the election will be primarily conducted in person. All 14 polling sites will be open from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We have new voting machines, instructions and videos on how to use these new machines are on the township website. That's all.
Mayor, I just raise a quick clarification on what was shared previously. Um, if someone will not be able to vote on Election Day, Madam Clerk, could they go to, can they get a vote by mail and bring it? Like you could apply at the county same day, turn it around and turn it in? Is that available if someone chooses to do that?
If I understand your question, you're asking, when is the absolute deadline for vote by mail application? Is that right?
Well, it's, you could potentially go to the county, request it in person, be handed it, fill it out and hand it back to the county. That could be done in a day in advance of Election Day. That's one last possibility for someone who cannot vote on Election Day who wishes to.
Up until 3:00 PM, county clerk's office, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to augment what was previous said in that regard. Thanks.
Councilman Schlegler?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I noticed on my ballot, my sample ballot that came today in the mail, that I usually, I usually vote at Edgemont Park House. I've been voting there for many, many years. But I noticed now it said Edgemont School. So have some of the vote, have some of the polls changed?
Yes, and signage will be placed on the unused polling sites. There's a total of three of them. And they were changed because of accessibility issues for voters. When they went out and did the inspections, it wasn't ideal for all voters. So there's a couple of changes, but that list of approved sites, it's on our township website as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, before we go into exec, I'll, I'll just simply, uh, just sort of, I think a lot was covered and many of the events that, that we've all been at, et cetera. But I, I will just take a moment to, um, you know, really just say that, that for me, uh, Memorial Day, um, you know, just such an important day, of course. But I have to say, uh, you know, being there and, uh, you know, speaking with a number of veterans afterwards, who, you know, came up to a few of us who were there and, and just really had, you know, great conversations, just hung out for, um, along with that. Councilman Schlegger, we were there, what, an hour, hour and a half after it ended, right? Just talking with, with some of our veterans. So, um, really, really is, is, it, it means a lot. And, uh, just want to say, um, you know, as I, as I use my remarks, just to really, you know, stress the importance of Memorial Day and remembering those who, uh, gave the ultimate sacrifice, uh, for, for us to be able to do everything that we do and to be able to debate and discuss and to be able to, uh, live in, uh, in this great nation. So I want to thank everybody, uh, who serve, everyone who serves and certainly, uh, everyone who's given that sacrifice. So with that, I will now make a motion to enter executive session. Sir, second?
Second.
Second. It's moved and seconded for all the reasons previously stated. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post-sentence, we will enter executive session.
Just to make sure that the written motion contains those reasons. We do have a written motion that we prepare after the meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I believe you guys have all clearly articulated all the points before, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Mrs. Stafford, we are live.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate that. We've come out of executive session. I so move make informants on the actions we took in executive session.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Bye, folks.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.